Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, May 2, 2016. Mrs. Bonifield, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonifield is here. President Burton?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a series of two meetings that will run back-to-back. Our first meeting has only one item on our agenda after Audience Communications, and that is voting on an approval of a resolution that we'll talk about just briefly in a few minutes. These meetings, as I said, will run back-to-back. For the audience at home, you may not even see a whole lot of a transition here if we do it well. For those who are here in our audience this evening, we do have agendas. I'm not sure where they're located, because we're in a new...
They're just to the table on your left.
To the table on the left back here. If you're watching from home, you can find our agendas on our website at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over our School Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along this evening. We would like to thank Franklin High School for hosting us this evening. It's a beautiful facility to be in, the auditorium is gorgeous, we have a number of our folks in our audience this evening. We'd also like to thank Franklin and our entire construction team for treating the board and the cabinet to a bit of a sneak peek of the bond auditorium that's going up right now. Those of you who are privileged to drive by and see this transformation in place, if you're going up or down Joy Road, take a look, it's pretty exciting. The auditorium will be finished and open sometime in the fall of 2016, so we're just months away right now, and it's pretty exciting. We would like to thank, first and foremost, for that addition to our schools and all the other numerous additions. We'd like to thank our citizens in our community. There are a number of folks who worked very hard to get the word out about the things that the bond would cover, the ways the school district would benefit, but bottom line, it was our citizens in our community in Livonia and in portions of Westland that are served by Livonia Public Schools who approved that bond. We're about halfway through our work right now that's benefiting so many of our schools in our district. So, thank you to our community for all that you've done. The next item on our agenda is Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time that the board sets aside to listen to concerns or comments from the community. It is not a question-and-answer time, so just so you're aware, if you're either participating or listening to Audience Communications, it's a time for the board to listen. Responses will come either from the board or from our administration, depending on what type of an issue is addressed to the board. A while back, one of our board members suggested that I let the community know exactly what the function of the board is and what the function of administration is, so that you'll not be surprised with the direction of where your response might come from. The Board of Education has three roles. The first is to hire and evaluate our superintendent, which we have been thrilled to hire Mrs. Okwes as our superintendent. The second is to set policy for the district. The third is to set our long-term goals and match our budget up to those goals. So, those three roles are exclusively the Board of Education. Everything else falls under the superintendent on down. So, if your concern is more of one involving the superintendent, the policy, or our strategic planning for the district, you can expect a response back from the Board of Education. If it is in any way a day-to-day operations-type of an issue, you can expect a response back from our superintendent, should you request one on your form. That being said, we do have a few folks who would like to address the board this evening. The first blue slip that I have is from Jeffrey Backus. Jeffrey? Can you come on up and join us? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Jeffrey Backus, and I am a teacher at Churchill High School. I attended Livonia Public Schools from kindergarten at Cleveland in 1983 to graduating from Stevenson in 1996. I began my coaching career at Stevenson in 2002 and became a prayer professional in 2005. After working in other districts in and out of the state for six years, I was hired this past August as a special education teacher at Churchill. I began teaching in 2009 during a time when the economy was in a downturn. My dad is a retired LPS teacher, and my mom is a current shared-time teacher here in the district. I knew going in that I would not make as much money as my parents, but Livonia is a respected school district that values the community's input in making educational decisions. As other districts have cut home economics, auto tech, and the arts, Livonia has kept these classes. I now have two small children that I would like to enroll in LPS and would like to be a teacher while they are here. With the amount of student loan debt my wife and I have accumulated, along with the daily cost of living rising, we may have to make the difficult decision of finding different employment. I love teaching, I love to interact with the students in and out of the classroom, and I love to coach. I want to be a part of this community. I'm in the bottom-third of the salary scale, and based on the current trend of salary advancement, I don't know if I will ever reach the top of the scale. As housing prices increase, gas prices rise, and medical costs go up, my income is stagnant. I am putting myself through a master's degree program, which is adding more debt I may never be able to pay off. There are fewer college students enrolling in teacher education programs, and the Michigan Senate passed a bill allowing retired teachers to take teaching jobs when there is a critical shortage. We have large groups of teachers that were hired in 1994, 1996, and 1999, and many will be eligible to retire in three years, five years, and eight years, respectively. I am concerned about what our district will look like at that time. Between now and then, will younger teachers who work hard be rewarded for their effort and commitment, or will they begin to find other employment? I really hope that I can teach in Livonia for 25 more years, and that more enthusiastic young people will work here as well. Working hard, receiving more and more paperwork to fill out, and not feeling any appreciation for our hard work is taxing. I, like many young teachers, have continued to invest in my professional training in order to be a highly qualified teacher. It would be nice to see the district show the same level of commitment. Please let teachers know they are valued for what they do and give to the students of Livonia Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker that I have this evening is Doug Coats.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Okwes?
Good evening.
As you've heard from LPS teachers a lot over the last few weeks and months, there's a lot of people who have reached the point, particularly those that are early in their teaching careers, that are feeling a lot of strain. Morale's low in the district among the teaching staff. And as you're aware, the teaching staff in Livonia has made a great deal of sacrifice in the last few years to help the district deal with the cuts that granted have been imposed by the state. The board needs to take a serious look, however, at the real impact those accumulated cuts have had on our teaching staff. You talked about budget goals and looking at plans for the future. The budget this board adopted for this current '15-'16 school year contained a cut in salary for teachers from the '14-'15 school year. The teaching staff are still currently without a salary settlement for this year, even though we're starting May. In spite of the fact that the audit that you had in the fall showed a significant surplus from last year's budget, you're spending less on teacher salary this year than you were last year. As you discuss the budget goals for next year, I hope that you have a plan in place to address the financial currents of your teachers and your other employees. The school district is spending $195 million to invest in its facilities, and that's a great investment that the community has provided to the district. Please ask yourself, as a board, what you're doing to invest in the human resources of your schools. As Mr. Backus told you, there's a significant teacher shortage looming. According to a recently completed survey by the UCLA Cooperative Institutional Research Program, college freshmen who intend to major in education has dropped by 62% since the year 2000, and the percentage of education majors has reached a 45-year low. The state of Michigan already has world language teachers, early childhood teachers, and career technical education teachers on its statewide critical shortage list. It is imperative for LPS to provide salary advancement and a career for your teaching staff, particularly your newer teachers who are going to be the lifeblood of the district five, 10 years from now. You need to make sure you don't lose experienced people in the prime of their careers to other districts or other professions. There must be a financially sustainable career for teachers and all staff here in Livonia Public Schools. Are you aware that a teacher that was hired in 2008 is currently taking home just over $2,000 more than they were eight years ago? Ask yourself if you would question the long-term prospects at a job where you saw only a 5% increase over eight years of employment. Would you advise those teachers to stay here or be looking around for something else? We would all like them to stay here, but the question is, is that what you would really give advice to them to do that? I'll stop, because that's the buzzer. Thank you.
Thank you. And the buzzer that you heard, that Mr. Coats obviously just heard also, is our three-minute time limit, which I failed to mention at the beginning, but I appreciate those folks respecting that we have for each speaker. Our last speaker is Jennifer DeLuca. I'm pronouncing... I'm sorry.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Jennifer DeLuca, and I am a teacher at Churchill High School. I started in Livonia in 1992. My very first day of subbing ever was at Churchill, and on that day, I knew it was where I wanted to spend my career. Two and a half years later, in August of 1994, I was hired at Churchill, and I've been there ever since. The year I hired in was the largest hire in Livonia in many years. It was an upswing in the district and the beginning of a prosperous time for LPS. Indeed, I have been very spoiled. I have never been laid off, I have never switched buildings, and I made all of my steps before the last pay freeze. I am hopeful that I will retire from Livonia Public Schools as a 30-plus-year teacher at Churchill, with the dream of a five-year-old girl who played school in her basement fully realized. So, why am I here? What could I possibly have to say to you? I'm all set, right? No, not even a little. When I was named Teacher of the Year in 1999-2000, I gave a speech in front of the school board, and in that speech, I thanked my parents for always worrying about me and me getting a job as a teacher, because then I never had to worry, and I could simply pursue my dream. When I was in high school and college, my parents were concerned about me becoming a teacher. They were worried about low pay, they were worried about layoffs, they were worried about public perception, they were worried about my self-worth. That left me with only one thing to worry about, and that was getting a job. Now that I've had that job for nearly 22 years, I have taken on all the worry of my parents, but not for myself. Now that worry is for my colleagues and for my district. I worry that the incredibly talented teachers of our district will not be able to afford to support themselves and their families. I worry that the stress of being laid off year after year will be too much for them, and they will leave the district for more stable pursuits. I worry that working multiple jobs in order to make ends meet will cause them to burn out and again leave the profession. I worry that working tirelessly year after year without gaining a step in pay will cause them to feel frustrated and hopeless. I worry that our students will not get the best of their teachers because their teachers are overworked, underpaid, and struggling to get by. And I worry that our teachers will not be able to give our students the best of themselves because there is no time or money to pursue higher learning, advanced degrees, or enrichment. In 22 years, I have met amazing people, people who give their hearts and souls to their students each and every day, people who spend their own money even after no pay raises to make their classrooms and their teaching better, people who know that ultimately, everything they do, they do for the students of Livonia Public Schools. LPS calls itself a lighthouse district, and this is true, and that LPS has drawn talented and dedicated people to its ranks, but it cannot end there. LPS needs to keep these individuals and show them that their efforts are appreciated and not in vain. I don't think I know a single person who has ever said, "I'm going to be a teacher, I'm going to be rich." But I do know scores who are simply asking to be able to live comfortably, to provide for their families, to feel that their futures are financially secure, and that any emergencies can be handled, with maybe just a smidge left for some fun in retirement. These people would gladly and do gladly give themselves each year, and should finally be told, "Yes, we value you, we can do that for you." And I heard the buzzer, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do not have any other blue slips, or is there anybody else in the audience who would like to approach the board this evening? Seeing none, I'll go to the next item on our agenda. The next item on our agenda is approval of a resolution in support of Senate-passed version of House Bill 4822, Third Grade Reading. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
I move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution in support of the Senate-passed version of House Bill 4822, Third Grade Reading.
We have a chorus of support. I believe the first one I heard is Mrs. Jarvis, although Mrs. Laura also supported this bill, or this motion, rather, I'm sorry. Mrs. Okwes, would you like to address this for the board?
I would, thank you. And then, I'd like to ask, when I'm done with just a few comments, if a board member would be willing to read the resolution, I think it would be important to have that read for our community. So, as you know, over the course of this fall and winter, we have been actively involved in working with our state legislature on Senate Bill 4822, deemed the Third Grade Reading Bill. There are many, many aspects of the legislation with which we agree. First of all, the focus on proficiency for third-grade readers across the state of Michigan is an essential component of our educational process, and one, quite frankly, that we have been focused on for many, many years in Livonia Public Schools. We are pleased that the state also sees this as a significant priority. We know that this is one of the key benchmarks that help to determine the trajectory for success for our learners as they go through their K-12 education. Again, there are many components, including the early intervention piece, the support for literacy coaches, and again, just the focus on the proficiency for students at this grade level and for additional training and professional development for teachers. There is one significant portion of this legislation with which we have strong disagreement, and that is the element of retention. Included in discussion about this bill over the course of the year, there's been a great deal of discussion about the term mandatory retention. So, briefly, what that would require is if students, beginning in the year, the school year 2019-2020, if students were not able to successfully pass the assigned assessment measure at the state level at a proficiency standard for third grade, that those students would be retained for the next school year, meaning they would not move on to fourth grade. In our school district over the years, we have spent countless hours and done significant research on the topic of student retention. And quite frankly, the research is overwhelming and supports that retention for students is simply not the answer. This is a measure with which we disagree fundamentally, and for a couple of key reasons. In Livonia Public Schools, we have established a process by which we identify early on. We don't wait until third grade. We start in kindergarten, in fact, the first two weeks of kindergarten, identifying benchmarks for our learners. We've set benchmarks three times a year, beginning in kindergarten. We assess all of our students, beginning in kindergarten through fourth grade. And we know our students who are struggling, we intervene appropriately, and then we continue to progress, monitor those students to assure their success. One of the key elements of that, over time, is that we continue to provide opportunities for teachers to hone their practice and to continue to garner professional development. As any key profession, we would not expect our skills to remain stagnant. We need the component included in this legislation that focuses on professional development, that focuses on early intervention, again, not waiting until third grade, not waiting until the results of a high-stakes assessment, but starting in kindergarten and identifying those learners who are struggling, and being able to recognize what they need and give them that intervention along the way. The other piece is, we know children develop at many different paces and many different rates. They don't all reach proficiency at one point in time. That's certainly a goal of ours, that they are proficient readers. We know that, again, to access content in all of our other areas, the importance of being a fundamentally sound reader who can not only read fluently but comprehend is extraordinarily important. And our teachers are truly experts. We ask them, quite frankly, to be experts at the elementary level in every content area, but we expect them all to have expertise in assisting our struggling readers. And so, we are focusing on the Senate, what we call the Senate-passed version of 4822. Right now, this bill is in the conference committee in the House of Representatives, and we are looking for support for the Senate version in that they have included what are called good cause exemptions to the mandatory retention piece of the legislation, which allows parents and the professional educators working with the children most closely to have a voice in the placement of students. We know in our community of Livonia, our parents are active partners, they want and deserve to have a voice in the education of their children, they are partners every step of the way. Why would we not expect that in a decision that would impact their child so greatly that they would not have a voice in that decision? So, one of the reasons why we're supporting the Senate version is because it not only recognizes the importance of the parent voice, it recognizes the input from the professional educators and administrators working with that child each and every day. So, if we could take a minute to read through the resolution, we will gladly send this up to the governor and to our legislators. We will also be sharing this publicly, and I will be adding my thoughts in a guest editorial this week on this topic in our Observer and Eccentric. We think that this is fundamentally important legislation. However, we feel very strongly that on the key provision with regard to mandatory retention, that it is essential that there are good cause exemptions that can be exercised by both parents and educators.
Thank you. May I have a board member who would like to read the resolution for the board?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonifield?
Whereas reading is the foundation to student learning, educational achievement, and ultimately, success in college and a career, and whereas we must provide educators research-based resources and professional development in order to provide effective interventions needed to ensure students can read, and whereas reading can break the cycle of poverty through research-based interventions to support low-income students in learning how to read, and whereas research shows that student retention can have lifelong negative consequences, including but not limited to increased likelihood of dropping out and psychological harm to students, and whereas mandatory retention will exacerbate challenges faced by students living in poverty, and whereas professional educators and parents should have the ultimate say on something as important as whether a student should be retained in a particular grade, and whereas the Senate version of the Third Grade Reading Bill establishes high standards for reading performance while giving parents and educators a say in deciding a student's future, and whereas the Senate version of the Third Grade Reading Bill will give students, parents, and educators the tools they need to help students learn to read, not simply test and punish those children who are already struggling learners. Therefore, be it resolved, the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education supports the Senate version of the Third Grade Reading Bill because it establishes high standards for reading performance, gives parents a say in deciding their child's future, and can help break the cycle of poverty through supporting low-income students in learning how to read.
Thank you. Do you want to read the last?
I hereby certify that the foregoing is full, true, and correct copy of a resolution duly passed and adopted by the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District at a meeting held thereof, held on the second day of May 2016, by the following vote of the trustees. Mrs. Wozniak will then fill in the a's and the nays, and then I will sign that, since we've established that it's been passed.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board on this topic? Mrs. Laura?
Thank you, President Burton. As a former educator, I just wanted to state that I strongly agree with the approval of this resolution, because I strongly support what is stated in this resolution. I understand the importance of identification, identifying those struggling readers early on, like Superintendent Okwes mentioned, we start at kindergarten. I understand the importance of early intervention to help with them, the importance of professional development in this area, and I also understand the importance of parent involvement and having parents and the educators, the professionals, agree for the learning goals of the students and their children. So, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. McDonald?
I just have a question, because I'm sorry for not knowing this, but I should, but I don't. This particular bill, would that only affect the school districts of public education, or does that also affect charter schools and parochial schools also in the legislation?
It would, in my understanding, it would definitely not impact private or parochial schools, and I believe charter schools that have public funding would be covered under this legislation. Yes.
Alrighty, thank you. And I too shall be supporting this. It's important for the school district and the parents to have a say in this. It's very, very important. Thank you.
Mr. Centers?
So, there are two versions of this bill, as you heard. There's a House version, and there's a Senate version. And the House version is saying that there are parents and educators should not have a voice in retaining their children. And you have to wonder where this comes from, because it's certainly not coming from parents who want their children retained, because that's already an option if they want to make that decision with educators. But is it coming from education experts? It's certainly not, because the consensus we hear over and over is that retention leads to higher dropout rates and negative outcomes. This is removing personal freedom from families, it's taking and trying to fix a problem that doesn't need solving. The retention piece of this, we should encourage literacy intervention, but again, you have to wonder what the motivation is for to retain children when it's not the will of families and educators. Our legislators need to do their homework, they need to talk to families, they need to talk to educators, because this bill is not good for kids. That's why we're supporting the Senate bill, because at least in the Senate bill, people get a voice. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Like several of my colleagues, I will also be supporting this bill. As Superintendent Okwes stated, I will repeat, Livonia Public Schools, like I would venture to say, the vast majority of districts do not wait until third grade, and they certainly do not wait until legislation is imposed on us to begin looking seriously at our children's ability to read by third grade. That begins in kindergarten, that begins in Livonia Public Schools in the first two weeks of kindergarten. It always has. We don't need legislation to tell us to do that. The vast majority of the school districts in the state of Michigan, I venture to say, are in the same boat as Livonia Public Schools. Again, I firmly believe that the educators and the parents who work with these children every day should be making this decision on whether or not a child is ready to proceed to the next grade or not, not any individual or any legislative body that has never spent five minutes with that child. For those reasons, I will also be supporting this bill, the Senate version of this bill regarding student reading by third grade. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No. Liz? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Jarvis.
I would just like to commend the senators for recognizing that students learn best with parent involvement, and for allowing the parents to be part of such a critical decision in their children's education. That really bodes well for the future of public education in Michigan, and I'll be happy to support this resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. I think you hit it right on the head. We have legislators that are dictating or want to dictate to us, to school districts, what they should and shouldn't be doing with their students when they don't know the student, they don't know the parent. They want to make an across-the-board rule that if this happens, then every student that fits in that category gets retained. I think that's ridiculous. They need to know the student, they need to know the interventions that we already have in place to address those issues before anybody could say, "This student should or shouldn't be retained." And, you know, it's just another form of government intervention to tell us what we should or shouldn't be doing. And I think that's outrageous, and I will be supporting the Senate bill, because I think it's, quite honestly, the least of two. it's, quite honestly, the least of two avenues to take.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries?
Thank you. And Superintendent Oakley, so you're going to see that this is sent to our governor and our legislators, is that correct?
I will. We'll do that tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Could this also, you and I did not discuss this prior, could this also be put on our website for the public to be able to access if they so chose?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And frequently, we do encourage our public to, in our community, to get involved and to contact the legislators when there are important educational issues that are coming before that legislator. This is one where we absolutely encourage you to contact our senators and our representatives. Their names and addresses are on the website of Livonia Public Schools, at livonypublicschools.org. We encourage you, take some of the language out of this resolution if you would like to, or take your own words, whichever you choose, but do take a few minutes, contact your legislators, and let them know if you have a feeling on this issue, because it is coming before them for a very, very important vote shortly. This is the last item on our agenda of our special meeting this evening. We are now adjourned from our special meeting. I am now opening our committee of the whole meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of May 2, 2016. Again, our agenda can be found, same website, www.livonypublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab and go down to Agendas, you can follow along with us this evening. The first item on our agenda is Audience Communications. We had Audience Communications a few minutes ago from some folks who chose to participate. Is there anybody else in our audience this evening who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we're going to go to Item Two of our agenda, Committee of the Whole, and we are going to hear from Mr. Archibald and Ms. Abbey on District Enrollment and Facility Study. Give them just a moment, they'll be joining us at the table.
Making the long launch?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Steve joins me. As you know, we have begun our work with the Building Utilization Committee and Enrollment Study Committee in the district. We had our second meeting today. Some of you were there. Very good meeting. We had a full house. As you know, we have several meetings set up for this school year. We have at least four meetings scheduled, and then depending on where we are with our work, we'll either bring forward some recommendations, or if we don't finish our work this year, as we said, if we don't get what we need to get done, then we'll bring that back to the Board of Education early in the fall. So, we spent, right now, I'll say we're in the weeds. We have big, giant binders. That information has detailed enrollment, as well as maps of every school and every building, frankly, including central office, including some of our rented buildings, but every building in the district. And those built, the Plant Moran Cressa, as you know, walked every one of those buildings, worked with our principals and staff to identify uses within those spaces, and actually today we spent several hours going through each and every one of those. It was really, it was very interesting meeting, because we did have representatives from every school there, so it was interesting to say, no, that's not that classroom, any room, that's a science room now, or we moved the school-age childcare over here. So we really had an opportunity to work in that minutia, so that we have a really good understanding of our building utilization, which is what we're looking at. So, I know that Plant Moran, Steve, myself, and other people made a lot of corrections, and we'll be updating those maps and getting that utilization amount or the capacity numbers that they had shared with you in that first week, and we'll continue to keep those updated as we catch things that are different from what we had originally thought. So, as you know, it's a very dynamic district. As soon as we think, for one minute, we know where everything is, it changes. So, as we continue to get that information, we'll continue to share it out. Our next meeting, we'll actually be looking at the enrollment by boundary, so by school. Again, we are going to be in the weeds for another meeting. We are really into the minutia, which we have to, we have to learn and understand, so that we can really start to look at that more from a broad standpoint. So first, we have to understand all the detail, then we can start to look at that more broadly. So, that's Steve?
I would just add, obviously with our committee that's in excess of 43 folks, who have varying degrees of experience or knowledge of our buildings, whether it's across a given level, as well as the different programs we have, you know, we could have spent even much more time than the six hours we have spent, but we're trying to create that foundation for everyone, so that we have a good working knowledge of the programs and the things specific to our district, as well as then the information from the reports from Plant Moran Cressa. So that really, until we can get that, you know, common understanding and whatnot, well, we'll have questions throughout this process. If we can get everyone to a certain point of understanding, it'll be easier to do, though not easy, but easier to do some of the heavy lifting that's ahead of us.
Questions or anything else? Mr. Johnson?
Just a kind of thing. I wasn't able to stay there this morning, but the one thing I would say is that we've got many people involved, and these people are very, very engaged. It's not a group of 43 people sitting around listening to a lecture. These people are very, very in tune with what's going on. They give tremendous input. There was a lot of back and forth this morning, from the time that I was there, regarding the utilization of the buildings. Even in some of the newer buildings that have already been renovated, things are not as they were when they were renovated. Things have been moved around. So, this is a very dynamic group. It's a dynamic set of circumstances. Things don't stay the same from one day to the next. So it's going to be very important to continue those talks, to continue that input, so that we can see down the road how to best utilize our facilities. So, I think they're doing great work.
So, one of the things we've talked about is being committed to continuously updating our community, and so certainly I appreciate our co-chairs, Ms. Abbey and Mr. Archibald, giving us that update, and they'll continue to do that at each meeting as we move forward. The other, Mrs. Jenkins just uploaded, I believe, today, an article?
In the morning.
In the morning. She will tomorrow. An article updating our community on this process with some new information, and we'll also be including, in the next couple of days, a number of FAQs, frequently asked questions, that were generated by the committee, or that we've had along the way, that I may have gotten as I've visited staffs and talked at staff meetings, or as people have submitted those to us. And so we'll continue to put that, and there'll be a separate section that will be accessible on the front of our website, that will link people directly to this information. So again, we are committed to keeping our community apprised of our work along the way.
And just for the public, keywords they're looking for, our District Enrollment and Building Utilization Committee. If you're looking for information on our website, I assume it's going to be under that title as we are internally referring to it. Is that correct?
We are. Mrs. Jenkins would like us to come up with a title that's a bit more brief, but at that point, at this point, that is the title we are using. Yes.
Alrighty, thank you. Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. As far as the complete information to the board, how long or how far out are we looking at? The end of this year, next fall? Is that what the target is at this point?
Yeah. Do you want to?
Ideally, we've said, you know, if we had something for June, I think we'll have a better idea after the next two meetings of a timeline, and I recall Superintendent Oakley saying a couple of weeks back, we aren't going to rush the recommendations for the sake of having recommendations before the school year's out. So, if we need to carry this work into the fall, then we, you know, there won't be any hesitation to do that. But again, I really think the next two meetings, we'll probably get a better handle on how quickly we might be able to get there.
One other question. Then I got a question this evening from a community member, and I didn't have time to write it down or anything, so I apologize. So maybe I'll get it to everyone, either tonight or tomorrow morning. But the information on how everything, just so I kind of get an idea of what this person was asking me, the information that's compiled, is there going to be information for the community or the public to see exactly how this thing was put together? Is, are the documents going to be available for review, I guess, is the question?
Well, certainly, we will have, Mr. Wills gave a broad overview at our committee meeting.
Right.
When it comes time for the committee to bring forward recommendations, part of that will be to certainly have opportunities for the community to hear, again, how that data was gathered over that three-month period, both for the enrollment and the building utilization. And so he would be able to provide an in-depth review of that information for any community member that would like to be part of that or to attend. And then additionally, the committee at that time would be able to provide recommendations, rationale, and impact for any options that they're offering to the board. So both of those things would take place, yes.
Okay, great. And I'll get that question out to everybody tomorrow. I won't promise today.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Alrighty. Thank you very much. And again, we do intend on continuing to update the community, most likely at each one of our meetings from here on out, because this is something that is so important to every aspect of our school district. So we will continue at each one of our meetings to give an update as far as what's going on with the district enrollment and the building utilization. The next item on our agenda is the Finance Committee. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. We'll begin the Finance Committee with a report on the 2016-2017 budget from Mrs. Abbey.
Thank you very much. I'm just checking out some documents that you have seen before. We did have an opportunity at our study session to provide an update to the Board of Education on where we are with the 2016-2017 budget. And the first page you have in your document is exactly what we covered at that meeting. We haven't made any changes to our assumptions and our projections at this point. So if you look at Column C, this is still where we are looking at our forecast for next year. We are still anticipating that we'll get the $60 foundation allowance. We feel, since both the executive and both chambers of the House came up with the same amount, all three came up with $60, we feel good about that. We've still included the $100,000 for a change in the assumptions regarding the potential change in count, whether it's 85-15, fall, last February, next February. I don't, we haven't seen any action on that since we talked about it last time. So, again, we don't feel like the 50-50, which is better for declining districts, is going to go anywhere. There was just too much pushback, given the amount of districts that that negatively affected. So as you look down that Column C, really, again, none of those assumptions have changed. I did update the second page of your document, I did update those assumptions, so that you have them, and I'll just really briefly go through those. Number one, we are looking at a change in our enrollment decline to 218,000 students, so about $1.8 million reduction in revenue. We've, as you know, we updated our school of choice last time to 129 students, so just a little over $1 million offsetting that decline. So that's good news. That's very good news. The change in blended count, 100,000. The foundation allowance of $60 is $846,000. And then the one-time revenues that you can see there make our total change in revenues a little over, or almost $2.7 million. And you'll recall those one-time revenues are the three property sales this year, the $856,000 from RISA that we received this one time this year to offset our transportation costs, and then $100,000 in state aid, that's a one-time prior-year revenue source. So again, about $2.7 million, and this is the assumptions that we've brought to the board the last couple of times we've talked about the budget. The expenditures, again, have not changed at all. Just as a reminder, we anticipate approximately 10 less teachers due to enrollment changes. We expect savings of a little over $400,000 from teachers retiring, so teachers retire at a higher rate. Savings from the retirement rate change, we have not seen this, I don't think in my tenure, but the actual retirement rate went down just a little bit this year, about 3/4 of a percent. So we do anticipate savings of about $577,000. Our increase in health care is tied to inflation, 315,000. As you know, we did increase the textbook budget. We had an update on that from Mrs. Alice and did bring that to the Board of Education to meet some of our requirements for next year for some of our program needs. Increase in fuel, utilities, insurance, plus some savings in other areas is a net increase of just over $100,000. And then, as you know, we will be adding days to the calendar next year. Exactly what that looks like, we don't know. We haven't finalized our calendar. As you know, that's, we're negotiating that right now, so we have a target of about 200,000. That could go up a little bit, could go down a little bit, we're not sure yet. So, all of those, again, those assumptions haven't changed, and what we have included in Column C is a budget target of $2.5 million, whether that's revenue enhancement or cost containment items, that would provide an actual, barely, barely, almost balanced budget of $260,000 surplus next year, any fund balance of just under $4.4 million. So as we bring this forward, assuming there aren't any significant changes from the legislators, we will be probably bringing you just that Column C, updated with those changes in revenues and expenditures. So if you take a look at the third sheet, the budget targets, again, this is what we provided the Board of Education at our last meeting. In order to get, how are we going to get that $2.5 million? What does that look like? What are our options for next year? Have a couple of budget options that we've discussed. Again, a one-time sale of property. We have, as we went over with the Board of Education, additional enrollment changes for next year, so based on the number of seats that we have open in ACAT and MACAT, we anticipate about 13 additional students, so those would be students outside of Livonia Public Schools. And as you know, we never make those seats open until we've done our own testing and filled those programs with Livonia Public Schools eligible students first. So those slots are above and beyond after we have filled all those spots with our students. The Nijiiro program, we're anticipating, this is actually probably conservative, we probably will have two full kindergartens, but we've budgeted 35 students, incoming students for next year, net with some leaving in our fifth grade. We have a net pay-to-participate savings in the general fund of $25,000, and Steve, my new budget buddy here, is going to help us with that in a minute. And as we said, we are using some of the fund balance in our Special Education Center program, 500,000. That is about half of what we have in that fund. So that will get, assuming no other changes, that would get us down to about a half a million dollars in that fund. And then, as we said, we anticipate this fiscal school year, 15-16, to come in better than our second budget amendment, so our final budget amendment, which will be seen shortly, we anticipate that our June 30, 2016, fund balance will be higher than we had anticipated. So, of that $2.5 million, we're very close. As you can see, we're $41,000 short of our $2.5 million target. So that was a lot of numbers, so let me open that up to questions. So, either on Column C from the original budget, or any of my assumptions, our assumptions, and then the budget targets. I'm just going to make a quick follow-up with them with the initial sheet that you had. So when you had first asked to see the budget in some different options, we talked about bringing to you three potential scenarios. And so, we feel, as Ms. Abbey said, pretty comfortable that the information coming from the state will hopefully stay consistent, and so we feel like we can drop Column B. And then Column D was the information the board had requested, that if we were to move to the 5% fund balance, what would that look like and what would that require? So at this point, you have this information, and we feel at this point that there would not be significant changes to reach that threshold. So for the matter of ease in being able to get some additional information on here, we'll just be bringing you forward Column C, because we believe that will be the area that we'll be recommending a budget to you to vote on at our June 6 meeting. So, we can bring back any of this information at any time, but again, we no longer think that we're working between three different scenarios. We're pretty comfortable.
We're pretty comfortable that we can work with these, within the assumptions of column C. So, unless you have any other requirements or requests on that, that's how we'll proceed. Just to be able to clarify and begin to bring forward to you in preparation for your vote in June.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. Just for a point of clarification, to make sure the community understands column D and the 5%, and the significance of that 5% target.
So, the state has identified districts below that who do not maintain a 5% fund balance are identified as early warning districts. And so, we were identified in Livonia Public Schools as an early warning district, because we do not maintain a fund balance at that threshold. And so, the Board had asked what that would look like with regard to, if we wanted to reach that, what would we need to do? What kind of budget target would we have? And so, that's the information that we have listed here, and certainly will be something that we will continue to talk about and to work toward. Ms. Abby, is there anything else you want to?
No, I think, yeah. As we've talked about before, and as I said, we have other funds that we do have available. We don't roll those into our general fund. We had talked about the way that the state looks at the general fund versus the fact that we disseminate all of our funds out on a fund level. So, like I said, we're going to use $500,000 out of the Special Education Center Fund. As you know, we have a Health and Welfare Fund. We've been using that down. We're using about $1 million this year. We have $1 million in next year's budget. Then, we hope to use it one more year, hopefully to get through '17, '18 as well. Then, that fund will be depleted. We also have, as you may recall, what we affectionately call the Durant Fund or the B4 Fund, which is our technology fund that used to be our technology replacement source on a five-year cycle. That's down to, I think we started the year with about $1 million. That is really our, number one, the only place we can buy software out of, because you cannot buy software out of sinking fund or bond fund. And number two, it's really been our emergency fund for those types of items. We've used it also for our Microsoft software, that kind of thing. So, while that sounds like a lot of money, that, believe me, has been going very quickly. We see that down within the next year or two. And then, really, food service is not a, is not a fund balance that we can tap into. That's not allowed. You can transfer some indirect costs, you know, to help you pay for accounts payable, payroll, you know, management in the business office, that kind of thing. But it isn't a fund. We could just take that money and transfer it to the general fund. So, I think we had talked a little bit about that last time, and I said that I would just update on what are other funds available in the district. And of course, you know, our sinking fund or capital projects funds cannot be transferred or used for the general fund.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I think all my questions have been answered, but we'll go over this again next month and in June and all of their fund stuff, so. And maybe they'll give us extra money we don't know about, right?
Well, we keep trying.
We can only hope, right?
Certainly, still on our list of advocacy, there, no doubt.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Ms. Abby, are you hearing anything with regard to the legislation as it relates to sinking fund?
Well, the only thing we have heard is that they are moving more positively towards technology, potential of making technology replacement out of that fund. So, it would be, my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, is it wouldn't be retro, so if you didn't have that in your sinking fund language when you passed it, but you could do it prospectively. Is that your?
That's correct.
So, if, when, and if we wanted to renew our sinking fund, we would add that language.
But there's nothing been passed by the legislators at this point that would allow that to occur.
That's correct. And my guess, it would still be the same in terms of software, that that would probably be equipment-related.
For the benefit of the public, who does not have this document in front of them, we're looking at 2.5 million of cost containment or revenue enhancement in order to get to the budget that we're looking, that we, that's being worked on right now. That would bring us to a fund balance of 3.57% at the end of the year. This is the 5% target that we're, that we're talking about. Livonia Public Schools is at 3.57, or would be if the budget is adopted as it looks today. And there are moving pieces, I recognize, that won't likely look exactly like this, but somewhere in the neighborhood. So, that we'd be at 3.57, and the state target is 5. We are, we're slowly moving in the direction of 5. We certainly don't want to be an early warning district, but we still are at this point. In order to get to a 5% balance, it would require, instead of 2.5 million of cost containment, it would require 4.2 million of cost containment. So, we would be looking at an additional 1.7 million of cost containment or revenue enhancement that the district would be required to do. So, we're moving in that direction, but we're not quite there yet.
So, I, oh, I'm sorry.
So, since we're looking at budget, let me take the opportunity to talk about what we talk about so often, is that schools are clearly not adequately funded. 2001, we took a cut about $450 per student. We've not nearly reached that amount that was cut from our districts, increasing costs with health care and other things. And you've seen the results. We have eliminated millions of dollars from this budget year after year. Our staff has taken huge sacrifices, and we're keeping our fingers crossed that we'll get $60 per student this year, which is not a 1% increase. This does not cover our costs, and our students are the ones that suffer. We have to say this over and over again, and we need, we discussed earlier, that families need to be advocates, and I think that when it comes to budget, families need to be advocates too. So, again, this is a great opportunity to say to our legislature that we need to adequately fund public schools.
I just wanted to give Mr. Archibald a chance to discuss the pay-to-participate proposal that's part of the budget targets.
Thank you, Ms. Abby. Just to review for you a couple of quick points, and then I did hand out the proposed increases to review. But the current pay-to-participate rates have been in effect since 2010. In total, our athletic budget is approximately $1.5 million. Of that, 40% of the budget comes from the pay-to-participate fees. About 15% of that budget comes from, the revenue for that budget comes from the gate receipts from the previous year. And then, the remainder of that is made up, which about 45% is made up with money from the general fund. Obviously, over the course of time, expenses continue to increase. I don't have to get into all of those, but you can imagine to be able to maintain the type of athletic offerings that we do have in our district, those costs increase every year. Over the past probably eight to 10 years, we've done quite a bit to be able to maintain our current program, and I'd just like to review a few of those things with you now. In addition to implementing pay-to-participate, we have reduced the line item budgets within the overall athletic department. We've implemented facility fees. We've reduced transportation for athletic events. We've put a significant increase on our fundraising at the building level by both teams and booster clubs. We have gone to a third-party contractor for our non-district personnel who are coaches. And just recently, we rebid our athletic training services. So, we have tried to do a fair amount while keeping our pay-to-participate fees flat. In the KLAAs, as we currently know it, there are 14 districts. There are a variety of pay-to-participate structures. Four of the districts do not have a pay-to-participate fee. Others have an annual fee like we do, so you pay one time. And then, that student for that year can participate in one, two, three, even four, I guess, multiple sports. Others pay by sport. There are family caps. There are family caps at a high school and then family cap at a middle school. There are transportation costs. There are a variety of different structures, again, within our league. To give you an idea, without an increase, Livonia would be fourth behind Wald Lake, Plymouth Canton, and Northville. With an increase to $350 for our standard rate, which is what we're proposing, we would move, obviously, to third. Again, for comparison, Clarenceville has an annual fee of $100, and Farmington has an annual fee of $350. Just to review for you the rates that we're, that we're looking at, and I have it there for you on a sheet, we would look for a, to increase the standard fee rate from $300 to $350. The reduced lunch rate from $150 to $175. The free lunch rate from $75 to $100. And the family cap, we would propose increasing that from $600 to $700. Important there to point out, to note that at the bottom of the page, that the facility fees and the equipment fee that we're proposing are not included in the cap. We propose maintaining our current golf fee of $150 at $150. The facility fee for hockey, we would propose increasing it from $500 to $600. And we suggest implementing a new fee, and that would be for equipment for football, and we're proposing a $75 fee there. To give you an idea, each of our schools now spends about $15,000 a year to have their shoulder pads and helmets cleaned, inspected, and reconditioned, and in many cases, replaced with respect to the helmets. There are, as you might imagine, with the concussion issues going on, there's some new legislation, and a helmet has a certain lifespan of 10 years. And so, even if you went out today and bought the very top-of-the-line helmet that you could use, bought it, put it on a shelf, never used it 10 years from now, that helmet could no longer be used. They all have, they have a 10-year lifespan on them. So, and again, there's a lot more technology going into helmets today, which drives the cost up a little bit than perhaps when I was wearing one a while back, which might or might not explain some things. But I'll leave it for questions.
Is there a family cap for the reduced or the free lunch categories?
Currently, they would fall under the same $600, or $600 cap mark, so there's not a separate one for them.
And if a student is paying, say a student plays a second sport, I'm sorry, I think you've gone over this, I missed it. If a student is playing a second sport, are they charged a second fee, or is this for a second student in the family?
The, you're only charged, each student is only charged the one, the standard fee or that fee one time, so there isn't a second fee. If that second sport is hockey or golf, that have the facility fee, they wouldn't pay the pay-to-participate fee, but they would pay that additional fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Senator?
You may not have this right off the top of your head, Steve, as good as you are. Do you know what we spend total on extracurricular activities, dollar amounts?
I do not.
Okay.
But we can get it. This is the biggest part of that budget, but we can definitely get that.
Okay. And what's our current spending on just athletics out of the general fund?
Out of the general fund, about $600,000, give or take.
Any other questions?
If I would comment, at our previous, one of our previous discussions on this, we were asked on the amount of revenue, perhaps for lack of a better word, that the district is missing out on by the family cap. So, I just touched base with each of the athletic directors, and in total, it would probably be less than, if I did the math correctly, less than $4,000.
So, just one quick reminder, thank you, Mr. Archibald, for putting this together for us. And I think it's important, the information that he noted with regard to the cost containment measures that have already been taken. So, in the past six to seven years, the, I think I captured six different things that we've done in cost containment measures before going back out to families to increase that fee. I think that's one really important component. The second is, as we shared with you at the study session, I think it's just important that we talk about publicly. We reminded you of the summary of the budget forums. And so, last year, we held budget forums and garnered input on the areas that were the greatest priority for our families to maintain. And then, those areas, if we did have to make budget reductions or take cost containment measures, where would they like us to look? And of the four areas most identified by parents and by staff, increasing pay-to-participate fees was one of the four items that our community was recommending.
I would just like to talk about the school funding in general. And I think some of the frustration that we feel as board members, there, and this was a couple of years ago, several of, several board members and I took, like, one of our legislators out to coffee and had a heart-to-heart about what the impact on the state funding was to our, to our school district and to public education in general. There was an editorial written that stated that we should quit whining and live within our means. I think as board members, we really struggle with the legislators, seeing that we continually balance our budget. No matter how much they cut us back, no matter what we do, we are good little soldiers, and we balance our budget at whatever cost it takes on our district, on our students, and on our staff. We balance our budget because we legally have to do that. We just, we had asked for, one of the questions I had asked is what kind of, to Superintendent Oakwest, was what kind of impact or other impacts are this having on us? And one of the things that we talked about was the textbooks, and that, you know, some of our textbooks are 16 years old, and how much would it take to replace those textbooks and bring us up to date so that our teachers and staff would have adequate, you know, texts and resources to educate our children? And that was seven?
Almost $7 million.
$7 million. So, e, even if they give us increases in our allowance, how long is it going to take us to recoup $7 million in order to pay for those? And that's just textbooks. That's not the financial impact that's having on the fact that we have very few interventionists. The state is throwing this third-grade reading bill at us, you know, saying that we need to retain our students in third grade if they can't read. However, they've cut our funding. In order to balance our budget, we've reduced so many of our interventionists, which are impacting our kids. How much money is it going to take us to rebuild that? And I think because we continually balance our budget, that the legislators have turned a deaf ear to us. And I'm asking that it needs to come from parents, it needs to come from staff. We hear every single week about these tragic stories about staff members and the, and the impact that these financial cuts are having on us. You know, we hear those stories, but we're only, we're, you know, second-hand stories telling our legislators. You know, what impact would it have if 15,000 staff, or 1,500 staff members wrote letters and sent them up to the state of Michigan? What impact would it have if they heard about people who left teaching because they couldn't make adequate wages? You know, what if they heard from, you know, students who potentially were going to be educators and are writing letters to the legislators, saying, "I'm not, I can't, I won't do it"? You know, we need not seven board members and a superintendent talking to the legislators who don't want to hear what we have to say. We need thousands of our residents in our We need thousands of our residents and our staff members and students, possibly, if we can, to band together and talk to the state of Michigan and let them know that the destruction of public education that they are creating by underfunding us and the deep hole, even though we're balancing our budget and selling our soul every year, selling off property, you know, we, to bring us back to where we need to be so that we can educate our children, who, everyone states that, you know, our most precious resources are our children, and they're the key to our future, yet we continually underfund the people that spend more time with our children than the parents do, and the resources that we give to them. And we hear continually how the United States of America is lagging in their education. We hear continually how poor our public education system is. And there are amazing, if the public school had the resources they needed, there are amazing things that the school district could do and intervene with these kids who have, sometimes have no resources at home. And there's just so much that public education could give to our world and our community if we were properly funded and change the fact that we have to put so much money into our prison system and so much money into our, our police force. And, and, and education is the key to changing all that. And if we continue to underfund that, we will, we will lose public education, and that will be a very sad day.
I just have one more thing to add today. Talking with Mark Burden, who was the, he's the executive director of Tri-County Alliance, which he, his job is to advocate for the three counties in the metro Detroit area. He informed me and others today that the state of Michigan is subsidizing their general fund with education dollars to the tune of $800 million. How egregious and terrible is that when we see what's happening in education? And that's, you know, it's an amazing statistic, and it was something I wanted to share with the public.
It might seem like a deviation from our topic, but really, when we're talking about the budget, we have to play within the rules, and the rules keep changing, and the budget keeps getting cut. And Mrs. Bonnefield makes a good point. Every time, we swing at what they throw us. And when we succeed, they say, "See, you guys are managing, you don't need the money."
What's the problem? We don't see a problem.
There's a big problem, and it's been going on for a lot of years, and we can only make do for so long. It's making do at what cost? At the cost for our children, at the cost for our staff, and that's not right. There is a constitutional mandate to fund public education. Public education is the future of our state, and by not funding our public education, you are not funding our future. And one must ask why. And then, after that, let's move on to the next item, which is the Wayne RISA 2016-17 preliminary budget with Ms. Abbey.
Thank you very much. I am passing down to you a draft of Wayne County RISA's proposed budget for next year. You may recall that several years ago, the law in the state of Michigan changed and requires local school districts within an ISD to review and then vote on the general fund budget of the ISD. You don't have to approve it, you just have to vote yea or nay and accept it, really. That will be your choice, as you go through it, how you want to vote. I can tell you that we, this board has voted approvingly of the ISD's budget since that law has been in place. I do know that the budget was presented to the superintendents. They've, in Wayne County, they've had an opportunity to review it. The business managers in Wayne County have had an opportunity to review it. You have this draft in front of you, it really shouldn't change at all. We have two weeks before we have a voting meeting, so you'll have significant opportunity to take a look at it. Provide me with any questions that you might have that I would get answered for you if I don't know them off the top of my head. What you have attached are three documents. The first one is the preliminary budget for 1617, which I will go through in just a second. There's also a several-page document from Wayne RISA, FAQs on that budget, which might answer some of your questions if you, if you do have some. And then their annual report for 2015-16, which is actually a very interesting document, if you haven't had a chance to really get into some of the nitty-gritty about what it is our Wayne County ISD does. It really provides a lot of detailed information. Some of that's in the budget as well, especially in the introduction pages from the Wayne County RISA superintendent, and some information on the budgets. But as you may know, Wayne RISA is in charge of supervising and helping with 33 local school districts. They actually have, in addition to that, made a couple of notes, 110 public school academies within the county. We have 275,000 students who attend public schools in Wayne County, and of that, 77% are in local districts and 23% are in PSAs or charters. 62% of the students in Wayne County are classified as economically disadvantaged. So I think you know some of the challenges that our ISD is working with. I want to, just kind of want to go back to the beginning. I'm not going to go through all of the funds with you, but if you go into the third page, you'll see the general fund of the ISD. So like our general fund, this is for day-to-day operating purposes of running the district. They actually have a very healthy fund balance. If you get down to the bottom and you see they have $10 million ending this year and expecting about $9.8 million in their fund balance last year, that's on $16 million of expenditures. So you can do the math, but I think that's almost 60% of a fund balance. Having said that, they do have in place a plan that they have been spending that down for the last several years. So they are actually having proposed deficit budgets, not deficit fund balance, but deficit budgets for the last several years. Their budget includes projections of state aid going up 1.6%. That was in the proposals that we've seen so far. And then they're also anticipating their property taxes increasing at about 1%. So that's where their changes in revenue are coming from. The next page is the, I'm just going to go through a few of these with you. The next page is the Act 18 Fund. And again, this is where our countywide center programs are funded. This is from property taxes, that all property, property owners in Wayne County contribute to this fund, and that money is dispersed to local ISDs who operate Act 18 programs. As you all know, we have four main programs in our district servicing about 400 students from the northwest area of Wayne County. So you know that we operate those programs in several of our buildings across the district. This, again, has a healthy fund balance, you see that increasing. As you know, this year, there was a distribution out of the 1516 approved budget to, to local districts for Livonia, it was about $850,000. We certainly have been one of many districts looking to the ISD to continue that for next year. Their job, of course, is to maintain that fund so that those funds are available going out into the future. You've seen the charts where we anticipated the fund balance going way down, back in the worst of the economic times. In addition to the fact that property taxes and property values are starting to move back up, that's helping with that fund, as well as there have been significant changes to some of the requirements and entry points, and the amount of staffing, and amount of supplies and materials available. So there have actually been cuts in the program in terms of expenditures as well, which has also helped to balance that budget and to continue to provide those resources as we go out for 10 or 15 years. So I do know that there, as they've been getting in from the local school districts, what, for example, what Livonia would anticipate our costs to be, some school districts have higher costs than they did this year. We actually have lower costs than we, as Dr. Terrell presented our budget to Wayne County. But they are looking at overall increased costs, so we'll continue to talk with them about their ability to help local districts in our special ed programs. The cooperative fund is money that comes from all the local school districts to help the ISD provide the cooperative services they do for us. So that's everything from their IT for human resources, payroll, accounting, student accounting, all of that that they provide and any other cooperative service. So we're charged a fee for that, is all the local districts based on number of students that we have. The funded project fund is exactly like our funded project funds, so these are where they maintain control and distribution over grant funds. The biggest portion of this is the IDEA, which is the federally funded special education funds that we receive based on our needs. Each district receives based on their needs. They also house a GSRP program that's run through the county now, that would run through this funded projects. It's really a conduit, again, for money coming in and going out for the ISD. Same with the special education fund. Medicaid fund, you'll recall, we get somewhere, it varies between $300,000 to $400,000 annually in Medicaid reimbursement. And then their capital projects fund, which is just would be like our funds to do upgrades at their sites, directly at their sites. So, big overview, you certainly have an opportunity to go through it. I think their budgets are reasonable and, and fair. They are using some of their fund balance. They do a good job of maintaining staffing levels, and I think that their changes make sense for this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Looks like there's, there is some significant work in Campbell Outlay. Do you know what it is they're doing?
Actually, I have a question into Steve Ezekian, so I will get back to you.
And the additional distribution of around $850,000 that Livonia Public Schools, for example, is getting, I'm sure the other 32 districts in Wayne County are getting a commensurate, you know, portion, or appropriate to the number of their students. Is that, would we be finding that under the Act 18 Fund?
Yes.
Is that where that's coming out of?
Right.
Okay.
And there is nothing at this point that has been budgeted for next year.
Okay. So this 1617 proposed budget, that's?
That, that does not include any distribution at this time.
Okay. Do we know when they'll be making that decision?
I don't. We certainly have the question out there, and we can certainly continue to ask.
Okay. And do we know when, at, at what point of their fiscal year did they make the decision for this year? I would, because I would think logically they'd be making it at the time that they budget, but obviously, they're not choosing it to make it then.
No. I think their fund balance came in better than they had anticipated for 1516, so for the current school year, so after the audit.
I believe we were notified in early March.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and, and their distribution method was based on the transportation, special education transportation costs, is how it was done. So it was a reimbursement for those costs, some of those costs.
Okay. And previously, we had picked up those, more of those costs?
Well, we, we have always been 100% responsible for transporting our special education students. That's across the state.
Okay.
So when they looked at their fund balance and had a higher than they anticipated fund balance, they thought that was a fair and reasonable way to distribute that.
Got it.
Because each district has, depending on their needs, some level of funding, and they can verify that from a report that we submit to the state each year that shows our general fund transportation costs and our special education transportation costs. And you may recall, we get about 70% of our special education transportation costs reimbursed each year from the state. That's part of the big special ed calculation. When I say about, because, now, make you understand, Special Accounting 101 is, number one, we're paid the foundation allowance times the number of students that we have. So that's a number. They also calculate 70% on our special transportation costs and about 28% in our total special education costs, and we get that reimbursement. But we get the difference between those. We don't get both. It's, we get however those, whatever the least of that is that, that counts, that's what we get, so that we don't get one on top of the other. We don't get both special education expenditures at 28%, transportation at 70%, and the student count times our $8,000, our foundation allowance. We get the aggregate, the larger of that.
Okay.
So if those special education costs in total are higher, we would get that number. If our enrollment was higher, we would get that number. Usually, our expenditures are higher.
Okay. Thank you.
More than you ever wanted to know.
May 16th voting meeting.
Correct. And again, I have at least one question right now to get back to, and if you have any, please feel free, just let me know. Thank you.
Last questions in conference?
We're going to cover this now. The Wayne County Enhancement Millage. Wayne County Enhancement Millage? Yes. We did, we wanted to touch on that in the budget, I'm sorry. Yes, that's okay. Thank you. No, 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 that's all right. Before we left Finance Committee. Well, would it be if I didn't have more paper for you? As part of the planning for next year, Lisa and I wanted to bring to you some discussion that is being had at this point in time across districts in Wayne County, to take a look at the possibility of a Wayne County Enhancement Millage for November of 2016. And so what we'd like to do is cover for you some highlights and give you some information. And so I'm going to cover some big-picture pieces related to this, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Abbey to fill in on some of the, the costs related to this for our community. So we'll just go through the bullet points, both for you and for the benefit of our community. So a countywide enhancement millage is the only legal mechanism that school districts have to increase unrestricted revenue, really in face of the long-term stagnant foundation grants. So some of the things that you as board members talked about this evening, and some of the challenges with regard to the, the revenue stagnation that we've been facing, and even with an increase in the per pupil foundation allowance, we're looking at a less than 1%, about a .7% increase for next year, which quite simply doesn't begin to cover our costs, let alone the impact of declining enrollment. So many districts, in fact, all of the districts across Wayne County will soon be discussing the possibility of once again going out to our community and looking at the possibility of a Wayne County Enhancement Millage. So it can only be placed on the ballot by your local ISD. So in our case, it would be by Wayne County RISA. And that would only be after districts have considered the question and boards have voted on a resolution to either support going out for the Wayne County Enhancement Millage or not. And they would need to have support of local school boards that calculate out to represent 51% or more of the students in the ISD. So it's not 51% of the districts, it's districts representing 51% or more of the students. So larger districts like Livonia would certainly have an impact on that, smaller districts, you know, less so, but certainly something that we are looking at in Wayne County superintendents very seriously because of the challenges that we've discussed here this evening. And as you know, many of our budget discussions and our budget planning includes one-time revenue sources. And what we are looking for is an opportunity to have some sustained revenue source moving forward that allows us to attack some of these budget priorities, including things like the textbook analysis that I had sent to you, the issue of wage stagnation, the issue, go down the list of the things that we have, whether it's intervention services, support to children directly, learning materials, all of those needs that we have, we are reticent to put into our budget because we don't have the continued revenue source and that stream coming forward. So a revenue enhancement millage would be levied and collected by the ISD, and then it's distributed out on a per pupil basis. If the, if two mills were levied for an
If the, if two mills were levied for an enhancement millage in Wayne County, it would generate approximately $370 per pupil, which is a substantial revenue opportunity for schools in Wayne County that are really in desperate need of an ongoing revenue source. It would generate just under $5.5 million a year for Livonia Public Schools, and that would be for six years. So that would be levy two mills per year for six years. If the election were to be, if it were supported and the ISD voted to put this on the ballot, it would be on the ballot for November of 2016. And the good news for that would be is that the funds would actually be available for the 1617 school year. So it would not be for the following year. That would be immediate. That would come in in December, January. And then each school district importantly has local control over how that money were to be utilized. There are not categoricals. There are not specific areas in which those monies would need to be allocated. Again, the focus on local control is really an essential item. I know that we've talked about a lot here, and that we continue to work very hard to be outstanding stewards of our resources, and that has grown increasingly difficult over time. This would allow us to prioritize the shortfalls that we see in our budget and in our expenditures and where we would like to support students and student learning in our district. And so each local school board would be able to determine how those funds would be used. I think that's a really important element of this. So Ms. Abbey, do you want to touch on what the cost would be for homeowners in general? Of course, this is always on an average, but what that would look like?
Yeah, we did have an opportunity just to get an update on what the taxable home value is in Livonia right now. So this would vary, obviously. An average means there's some higher and some lower, and this is, you know, depending on the community, it could be lower. But that's $72,000 per year taxable value. So that's not your SCV or your home appraisal value, but it's actually what you're taxed on. And at two mills, that would be about $144 a year or $12 a month to a homeowner for that. So I think it's a lot of value for $12 for, as Mrs. Oak was said, for us to be able to have an opportunity to reprioritize.
So we wanted to bring forward with you is just some initial information to be able to start the discussion on this. What we'd like to do is continue this discussion at upcoming committee meetings and study sessions so that we have an opportunity to continue to provide you with information and then to get a feel for whether or not this would be something that our board would consider supporting. And then we'll look to movement on that same regard in other Wayne County districts. And the determination would need to be made by July. So we would probably look for a vote at our late June meeting on this. So I know it's still a couple months out, but it's an important element. I know this is important to all of you on many fronts. One, we take these types of decisions very seriously when we look to ask our community for this support. We also know that many times we're asked by the community, why don't you just go out for a millage? Why can't we levy a local millage any longer as we used to prior to Prop. A? And so this is one of those opportunities to, we heard that actually as part of the budget forums, quite frankly. We certainly don't expect our community to be experts in every element of how schools are financed. And I think many people are surprised to know that there are very little opportunities for the community to be able to provide the support that they have expressed to us that they want to be able to provide. So this is one of the very limited mechanisms for us to do so, but it does require an agreement of the majority of districts, of districts representing the majority of Wayne County students. So again, this is a first, not the first look at it for you. Certainly, this has come forward to us before. And if you may recall, the last time this was up for a vote, I believe it was within a half percent. I think it was 5149 or somewhere right around there in the Wayne County districts. And so we would hope if we were able to move forward and this were to success, to be successful, this could potentially have a very positive impact on the students of Wayne County. And there is certainly great need across the board. So bring this forward just for initial consideration for you, and then we'll continue to bring this back at study sessions and committee meetings. And I invite you to please send me any questions you have, any research or background that you would like to have as part of your deliberations and consideration, and Ms. Abbey and I will happily gather that for you and then share that back out publicly.
And any questions?
We'll wrap up the Finance Committee report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 4, Policy Committee. Mrs. Bonfield.
We have two items on our agenda for Policy Committee, and the first one, GAA, Mr. Archibald will assist us with.
Thank you, Ms. Bonfield, and good evening. This is a simple revision to this policy. You remember, we've talked to the board before about the action items as a result of the Civil Rights Compliance Review that took place back in October. In this policy, the third paragraph addresses how a person would go about making a complaint if they felt there had been a violation with respect to one of these nondiscriminative protections. And what we were instructed and asked to add to this policy is the fact that a person wishing to make a complaint does not have to follow this procedure if they would wish to go directly to the U.S. Department of Education Office of Civil Rights. So while our policy outlines our district procedure, again, a person who wishes can just go right to the U.S. Department of Education. So we simply add that line.
Okay. Questions? And then we'll put that on as a first reading at the March 16th meeting, uh, May 16th meeting. Okay, and our second item is B, Policy J, A, B, and Mr. Archibald and Ms. Terrell will help us with that one.
If you liked how the previous policy went, you'll really like this one. Again, we're just adding that same statement to this policy.
And again, we'll do a first reading on May 16th. Since that will conclude policy.
All righty. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 5, Curriculum Committee. Mrs. Laura.
Thank you, President Burton. We have one item on our Curriculum Committee this evening, and that's the Continuous Improvement Monitoring System. And Dr. Terrell, would you speak to that?
Thank you, Vice President Laura, for the opportunity to address the board on the Continuous Improvement Monitoring System, otherwise known as SIMS. Similar to Mrs. Alice's summary of the district's annual education report, I would like to give you just a brief overview on the SIMS process for special education. SIMS is a state system that provides information to local districts regarding our performance and our compliance in two different areas. Part C for our special education students birth to three, and Part B for our special education students three to age 26. The state notifies us of our compliance on 11 Part C indicators and 17 Part B indicators. The system provides a standardized process and resources for any necessary corrections and establishes a system of improvement with specific tasks that we're required to complete. One example from both Part C and Part B would be timely IEPs. For Part C, we're required to hold an IEP by a student's third birthday, and for Part B, we're required to hold an annual IEP every 364 days. So the state pulls our system from MSDS and from SEPI, and they look at the child's third birthday, and they make sure that we held the IEP before their third birthday. And then the state also pulls all of our IEPs and makes sure that our annual IEP dates line up. The state expectation is 100% compliance. There's many areas that they look at, again, 11 for the young birth to three and 17 indicators for the three to age 26. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions in conference? Mr. Johnson?
Dr. Terrell, if, you said that they look to make sure that an IEP is done before the third birthday.
Correct.
What happens, and I know that sometimes you have difficulty getting the parents to sit down to do the IEP, and there are adjournments, adjournments. What happens if you don't get the IEP done by the third birthday as a result of things beyond our control?
That's a great question, and we actually had that this year where we had a child that was evaluated for special education. So that process happened in a timely manner, but then the family did not present us the student until after their third birthday. The state will still say that we did not hold a timely IEP. So then we provide as much information as we can to the state to explain why that was not done in a timely manner because the family didn't present the child to us. And currently, we're waiting for the state to get back with us regarding that information.
Anyone else? And all the monitoring and recording until it's done online?
Correct. Correct.
It's a little easy.
Correct. Oh, absolutely. The workbook's open four times a year, and they tell us which indicators they're looking at and which data they would like us to review. And then I enter every information into the SIMS online system.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you very much.
President Burton, that concludes our Curriculum Committee.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6, Building and Sites. Mr. Johnson, do we have anything for Building and Sites this evening?
President Burton, this is going to be one of those extremely rare occasions where you're going to hear me say, "We have nothing under Building and Sites this evening."
Would you like to let the, tell us know a little bit about our Franklin tour today?
Boy, that's a good idea. We had an opportunity before our special meeting to tour the new auditorium, and quite honestly, even in the state it's in right now, I was blown away. This is going to be just outstanding. I think we all agree that we came from the backside of the, what would be the stage. And looking out, they have not dug the seating yet. And from where we were standing, I'll be honest, I'm looking out, I wasn't that impressed. But then we went around to the front where you would enter, and we were able to go up and see from the, what I'll just call the stadium seating. And my whole attitude changed. It was just outstanding. And from going up higher and higher to look down, this is going to be a really impressive work of art when we get done with that. And I'm very impressed with what I saw for the stage that it's in, and I really can't wait to walk in for that first performance.
Yeah, I agree.
That's just going to be something of a wonder. So I think we were all impressed by what we saw tonight. And keep up the good work.
All righty. Thank you. Anybody else on that topic this evening? No? All righty. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Personnel Committee. Mr. Sanders, do you have anything this evening?
We have nothing this evening.
All righty. And Item 8, Legislative. Mrs. McDonnell.
No, we have nothing tonight.
All righty. Okay. That brings us to the end of our agenda. There was a lot of discussion this evening. Our next meeting will be our general meeting or voting meeting on May 9th, so you may tune in then, and we will take some votes on several of the topics that we discussed this evening. And I wish you all a good evening. Thank you. We are adjourned.